Call me into order, please. We will start with the Blacksmith.
I would like to testify that the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We thank you for all the blessings that you give us each day. We are thankful for our families, our friends, communities, the state and our country. We ask that you keep our country and the rest of the world close so that we might all come through this pandemic with minimal losses. We pray that our loved ones stay safe and healthy. With the start of school comes challenges. We ask that our children stay safe while walking to and or riding to school, stay protected from COVID, and thrive in their educational opportunities for the future. We would also pray for our parents as they send their precious children to us to teach, to feed, to keep, or with love. We are all in this together. We would also ask you keep our men and women in the armed forces safe, and we thank them for their service. We ask this in your name.
Roll call. Mr. Newsom. Mr. Riley.
Here.
Mrs. Rowland. President, Mrs. Trup. President, Mrs. Zemerschek.
Here.
Do you have any public comments? Superintendent's report with potential for discussion. I'd love to discuss return to learn plan updates and American Relief Plan.
Yes, we are requesting some modifications to our return to learn plan just because of some new information that we have. You have seen this for the last three months. I previewed it two months ago and then you approved it last month. So I'm just going to present the slides for modification. So on masking, last month and the previous month, I talked to you about Senate Bill 658 that went into effect July 1. I previously reported that masks were optional unless a state of emergency is recommended by the governor or if the K County Health Department or the local county health department makes that recommendation. We were informed that is incorrect interpretation. First, it has to come from the governor. There has to be a state of emergency declared by the governor. Then the local health department can tell you if you don't need to issue a mask mandate. If we're in green or yellow, I'm assuming they would say we don't need to. So I corrected that on masking for return to learn, and there are no other corrections on that slide that I presented the previous two months. We did, Oklahoma School Superintendents met with the State Commissioner of Health this last week via Zoom, and there has been some changes in close contact quarantines. So we were informed last week that the Oklahoma State Department of Health will no longer issue close contact quarantines based on exposure to a positive case. And if you remember last year, a lot of our kids were out of school just because they were at close contact, and the trigger is if you are less than six feet for 15 minutes or more, that triggers the close contact quarantine. And the reason that the health department said that they were no longer going to do that is for the sheer number of close contacts, and they can't even issue those quarantines within a 10-day period, and that's how long the close contact quarantine is. And we worked with the school, with the health department last year. The schools do contact tracing, but we do not have the authority to issue a quarantine or an isolation. So we cannot issue a quarantine. We will continue to contact trace if there is a positive case in the school, and we will let our parents know. Our contact tracers are either our school nurses or they have been trained by Johns Hopkins University. We'll conduct the contact tracing investigation and notify parents, and we will give parents the choice that they can have their child self-quarantine at home and we will provide distance learning and/or just like it did last year, so they will not be absent. If they log into distance learning, they will be DVP, Distance Virtual Present, or DVA, Distance Virtual Accent. Or they can choose no home quarantine and monitor for symptoms, and we will monitor for symptoms as well. We are still going to track our close contacts so that we can monitor and we know who is choosing to quarantine at home because we know what day they should return to school. So we'll continue on with that process. And Chrissy is going to be our contact tracing or spreadsheet totals. She will track those for us. She's going to be tracking for us. Any questions in regard to the announcement from the OSDH? Now, they recommend that we continue to recommend close contact quarantines, but we have no ticket yet. So we cannot issue that. We are not the government agency in charge of a health crisis. So superintendent's I've met all over the state this past week via ZIM, of course, and this is what most superintendent's are doing. I have seen some superintendent's that are very few schools that are going to go ahead and require that, and it would just be like a suspension where they're doing work if they're suspended. And then some districts are telling parents that you don't have a choice. You have to be at school, and if the kids are symptomatic, you must have a doctor's note. So choices are always good. So if we're approved, we're going to give that choice, either quarantine at home, we provide distance learning, or no home quarantine and monitor for symptoms. Now, this is the big chart that kind of explains it all. And if you look up in the top in the white section, this just explains the new guidance. The Oklahoma State Department of Health will no longer issue post-contact quarantines based on exposure to a positive case. However, and I did not mention this on the last slide, the OSDH will continue to issue mandatory isolations for positive cases. So if we have a student or employee who tests positive, it is a mandatory isolation. And isolation is what a case would do. They would isolate. A quarantine is for close contact. And the health department can issue a court order for failure to isolate if there's a positive. So we do have some deep in that. Didn't change anything in the green or the yellow. Masks were welcome but not required pursuant to Senate Bill 658. I made the changes in orange 1, orange 2, and red that if the governor declares a state of emergency, masks will be required in whatever zone. We're saying orange 1 is in mask zones. Mask zones include hallways, common areas, large group settings particularly if you can't distance. And I made a change on safety protocols. Our COVID team met the last two weeks, and we've been working around the block to change our guidance. We had two weeks, as you know. COVID rates and risk levels have been going up. Luckily, we know what to do, so I just changed that to other side. Safety protocols may be implemented. And then the final bullet just explains that we are going to do contact tracing at orange 1, orange 2, and red, and we will give our parents the option of self-quarantine or no home quarantine and monitor for symptoms. I will tell you, we've had several positives already and with activities, and all one people have chosen quarantine. Some of our activities such as high steppers and cheerleaders, they're not competing right now, so the coaches voluntarily canceled practice, but girls should be returning shortly. So I also will tell you that we have had breakthrough cases. Several of our people that have tested positive were fully vaccinated. So a little bit about the law on 658. We cannot require a mask mandate on any of our properties. We cannot require that our staff or our students who are eligible be vaccinated, but as the law reads, we can require visitors to be vaccinated. We're not going to go there. We're going to prefer that in some situations. However, with our visitors that stay all day, like our tutors or our university students who are doing student teaching or maybe observing, every university that we've spoken to is requiring vaccinations. So we would prefer that. I will tell you that our breakthrough cases, the symptoms have been very, very mild. So by law, we cannot require, but we can certainly encourage our employees to be vaccinated and wear the mask. So. Any questions there?
I have one. Okay. How are you going to monitor for symptoms?
Well, we've got, that's coming up in our slides. The OSDH did provide us a new symptoms chart, and we are making posters of those. It will be in every teacher's lounge. All the principals will talk to their staff about it, and by that chart, we will send students home if they are exhibiting those symptoms. And we just want to remind parents to lock the back. We will request if they get tested, but we cannot require it. Okay, here we are. Here's a symptoms chart. These are ways our parents and patrons can help mitigate the spread. Don't send your children to school if they have symptoms relative to the OSDH symptoms chart. We will follow the same criteria for sending students home and requesting a COVID test. And notice there are two columns for the symptoms charts. There's A symptoms and there's B symptoms. I will let you read through those. Then the OSDH recommends that the parent COVID test or the employee, if a person has one A symptom, not very many, or three B symptoms. So they will recommend that we send students home and request that they test or staff if they have one A symptom or three B symptoms down at the bottom. Now, initially, that just had cough on there, and we, I talked to this K County Health Department director, which I do every day, and she said, "Look, we're going to use some common sense here. Is this like a persistent cough?" And she said, "Absolutely." So I, she said it was okay for me to go in that persistent. We just don't want our kids to be sent home for every time cough because that's going to happen.
And we're still doing all of the strategies that you talked about, hand washing.
Yes, we're going to talk about the life keep prevention strategies. Okay, now, one thing that I would ask is that we consider to allow the superintendent to make changes in the return to learn plan based on two things. If the governor declares a state of emergency and he has publicly said that he is not going to do that, and our rates are really high, we would have to have a board meeting to require masking. Or if the OSDH says that they are going to start issuing quarantines, and by the way, the Commissioner of Health said they could change their protocols within the next two weeks, and we're like, "Okay, great." Right before school starts. So if they change the protocols, we would need to have a board meeting to issue or to work in conjunction with the K County Health Department to issue those quarantines. So just on those two items, so something to consider. The five key preventative strategies, they were actually in the return to learn plan last time that you've already approved, would be proper wearing of mask if the governor declares a state of emergency, participating in contact tracing, keeping our buildings clean and sanitized, distancing for more than six feet when possible, and the final is respiratory and hand washing etiquette. So our staff all has copies of those five key prevention strategies. We're kind of in a different situation than we were last year at this time. We had five months to plan, and we went into mandatory closure in March from when we started in August last year. Good news is we've had two weeks, but we know the protocols, we know what to do. We're also in a different situation because there is the possibility that many people are vaccinated. And last year at this time, there was no vaccination on the horizon. So we are in a different decision-making situation. We are moving along with a lot of our back-to-school events and events that we previously abandoned, and we have tight to those all year. We are going to be flexible as risk levels rise and fall. Right now, our inside capacity limits is going to be set at 50%. We're not going to have a lot of that in the fall because we have volleyball indoors, and that's it as far as sports go. We are not going to set capacity limits on outside events. It's open air outside. So for our back-to-school nights, we're doing some things and we're requesting that maybe those nights are divided up by alphabet, A to M, four to five, M to Z, five to six, if possible. We realize that there might be parents that have no place to take their three children, and they have to come at a different time, and we are going to be very accepting of that. We've also asked that maybe they limit to one guest if possible. Sometimes parents have three kids, and they may all have to come in. So we're going to work with everyone on this. One thing that we're going to urge our teachers to do is, hey, let's get in and get out within 15 minutes so we don't trigger that close contact. But I would tell you, it was hard on our elementary kids not to see their classroom the first day of school last year. So we're not doing like experiment mall sales at the high school. We can do that outside or after school starts. So we are making, putting some common sense protocols in place and still trying to move on. We do have some concerts in October. We're not canceling anything as of this 10 seconds because we don't know what's on. We have, you know, October, we're going to make plan. A lot of people have asked me, "So what are the protocols going to be on November 8th?" I have no clue. I know what they are today. So we're just going to be flexible and make it work and try to provide the best opportunities that we can for our students. That's it on the modifications of the return to learn plan in case, unless maybe we have any questions. Okay, I sent you the American Relief Plan in advance, and you got it with the agenda to review. And by law, for us to submit the application for our SIR 3 funds, we have to have a board approved American Relief Plan. And I have shared a lot of this with you, but I'm going to talk to you about the four parts. How funds will be used to implement prevention and mitigation strategies. Many were addressed in the original return to learn plan. The Casper unit, the ITSN ode, cleaning up facilities, new buses, that can mitigate. And then I've got a few more to share with you. How the LEA will use the funds, the 20% to measure and address the academic impacts, impact of lost instruction. We've talked about this. We have to spend 20% using evidence-based interventions. A lot of this is our software, the people we hired, our interventionists, our SEL people, our social emotional learning people, our two additional reading teachers at West Middle School, so you are very familiar with that. How the remaining ARP SIR 3 funds will be spent, and this was just a section, PD, it was in the return to learn plan, our PLC training that we did this summer, the, I don't know if you guys saw that, SEL for students, mindfulness training. They come up with mindfulness, the mindfulness training, and we will hire some TAs. There's new laws on kindergarten and first grade class limits. We over, there was some legislation in 2019, and an additional 100 million were added back into the state A formula. It would trigger the class size limits for kindergarten and first. We can have nine over in a building, so if we have two sections of kindergarten, we can have 49 by law, but we have to hire a TA anything over 40. So our classrooms are going to be full, so we anticipate hiring some additional support for our students. How the LEA will ensure the interventionists, interventions it implements will respond to the academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs of students, including students from low-income families, students of color, EL students, children with disabilities, students experiencing homelessness, children in foster care, and migratory children. And that was all in the return to learn plan. Tier one, tier two, tier three interventions for our homeless children. They will be allowed to register without records. We shared a lot of information in regard to our EL. We will have an EL IDP, and we will have someone available to speak the language of the parents for any kind of meetings. For our children with disabilities, we will have all kinds of modifications depending on how the IDP written and the contingency plans. So I shared a lot of that with you. I can go over it with you again, and I know you had it in advance, but really, the main thing that I did not share in addition to the Casper units and some of the things that we have already done is how funds will be used to implement prevention and mitigation strategies. And keep in mind, this is just for SIR 3 funds, and we are doing some renovations, as you know, with SIR 3 funds for prepare, prevent, and respond. So some of the things that we can do at Kohi, we are doing a lot of HVAC replacement. That's in the HOW in the Fine Arts Building because that helps with ventilation. We are going to do a HOW renovation in that we are renovating the restrooms. That is an approved renovation that we can do for SIR 3. So how many restrooms, Mr. Spence?
Oh, one.
Oh, a lot of restrooms, I will tell you that. And we will do some touchless fountains and touchless water faucets, those kinds of things. So that's what will be happening at Kohi. Oh, I left off the window replacement. That helps with ventilation. So in the Commons, heading up to the HOW and into the Anderson Building, we will be replacing our windows with window systems. And right now, you know the seal is not tight on those windows in the Commons and that lead into the HOW and the Anderson. So we will replace those windows that, similar to these, that have a shape, automatic shape. At Lincoln Elementary, we are going to do a cafeteria remodel, and for those of you that aren't familiar with Lincoln, our, the cafeteria line is in the gym. So there is not enough time in the day for our kids to get PE again and have lunch. We can't do stuff PE to have lunch. So this will kind of spread our kids out a little more. We will move the serving line back and expand the cafeteria at Lincoln Elementary. We will, we are also going to do all district elementary schools in the pre-K center, a new, either additional or replacement of playground equipment. And this is a big toy that will be on a sturdy surface, and this will allow us to have our kids go outside in cohorts so that they're not exposed, so like, certain grade levels will play in certain areas. So that is what we will be doing as far as prevention and mitigation with our SIR 3 funds. Okay, any questions there on the American Relief Plan? All right, I'm going to give you a stacking report. It's not on there. Total filled, unfilled, and filled certified positions. We still have the one opening left, the secondary athletic trainer, and I'm not going to say that we're not going to find one because stranger things have happened, but we're still looking. We have 62 new hires pending board approval tonight. We did add a section pending board approval. As you know, I reviewed this before. We have 5.4 counselors and therapists, which will help us with social emotional learning, which is part of the American Relief Plan. We added one dean of students at the high school, two reading teachers at West Middle School, one executive director of operations, that's an intern, that's a temporary position. We have 2.1 elementary interventionists, and we added a kindergarten teacher at Woodlands pending VOD approval. In this entire district, we have less, very few kindergarten openings, which is a good thing if that kid's coming back to school, and I'll talk to you a little bit about our enrollment. So we added a section at Woodlands. So I want you to person that report pending board approval. All right, we reinstated a position. We reinstated the instructional coach at West Middle School, so that's a total of 13 and a half positions. We closed two positions last year due to class size. We closed a fourth grade at Roosevelt and third grade at Trout. So that means we have added 13.5 minus two, 11 and a half new positions, and this actually equals 14 humans because some are just part-time people. So it's 11.5 FTE, full-time. Any questions on our sapping? Just to give you a few more specifics, you know we're in a severe teacher shortage crises. 2,400 more teachers retired this year than this time last year. That's in addition, not 2,400 total, and the projected university graduates in education, 1265, isn't that about right? Sat, I'm close.
I don't remember.
That's about right. Either 1245 or 1265. Bottom line, it's not enough to cover the people who are retired, much less who left the state or left the profession. So, I'm tough. So for this school year, '21, '22, we're going to have 40 certified teachers who have emergency certification. That's not that we hype that 40 of our 62 new teachers are emergency certified. 17 of those 62 are emergency certified, I will tell you that. But teachers have three years to get through that emergency certified process. They have to test, proficiency test. With COVID, they've got an additional year, so that helped some of our employees. All right, so here's where we are. We have 14 who are emergency certified at the elementary level, and we have 26 who are emergency certified at the secondary level. We have 18 in year one emergency certification. I said 17, but we're adding, we're adding the kindergarten teacher at Woodlands, and that is an emergency certification. Our year two emergency, we have nine. Year three emergency, we have 13. And they eventually fall off of that emergency because they have only a short amount of time to meet the requirements for standard certification. So we have 323 certified staff. This is excluding the administrators. These are teachers in the classroom. So 40 out of 323, or 12.3% of our teachers are emergency certified.
Sure, on the emergency certified teachers, are they imperative of the first-year teachers?
Absolutely. And we have an induction process for year one, year two, and year three, and actually year four. So we support them through the induction phase. And yes, our first year have mentors. Any questions on that? Okay, I'll give you an enrollment update. So the registration center was open today, so here's our data as of 4 o'clock when they close. So far, we have 4,033 students enrolled. We ended the year last year with 4388, and our ADM was down a little over 300 last year, right Brenda? It's typical to have many enroll the day before and the day school starts. Dr. Hopkins said it's not unusual to have 50 to 150 on day one, just walk into the high school, ready to show up. So we have three more days of registration this week. Last Thursday, we registered 200. Friday, 100. Today, 98. So I believe enrollment is going to be up based on past years. We have a lot of students that come the day before or the day that school starts. Here's our number of elementary and three-year-olds who either attend speech or TSL, 1844. Woodlands has the highest enrollment as of this 10 seconds, followed by Lincoln, Trout, Roosevelt, Union, Washington 3K, Liberty, and Garfield. Highest to lowest, Woodlands. Highest to lowest, Woodlands is the only school that is ahead of schedule as of this ten seconds, so, and we still have several more days to enroll. They have more students depending on, we're potentially adding a kindergarten. So I believe Woodlands is at two ninety-six, and Garfield is at one fifty, so everyone else is in between that. I, I will tell you that we have a lot of Lincoln students that will enroll later on. They have a lot going on as far as cultural league right now at the tribe, so we'll have a lot of Lincoln students coming as well. West Middle School, sixth and seventh grade, have six hundred and thirty-one students. East Middle School, it's just eighth grade, three twenty-six. Pomp City Wildcat and Wildcat Academy, twelve thirty-two, and that's about where we were last year. So if we have one hundred and fifty more walk in on the first day, that's going to be a super high enrollment, and that possibly could happen. Here's something that is really interesting at the end of the day. We had, we have one hundred and fifty-nine returning from a public virtual school that are starting for the first time with us on August eighteenth. Pomp City Virtual Academy, here are our numbers as of today. We have nineteen elementary, sixteen middle school, and thirty-six high school. That's seventy-one, and that seventy-one is included in the totals of the four thousand thirty-three. Now, what I want to point out to you, last year, on the first day of school, we had six hundred and four starting in Pomp City Virtual. We ended the year last year with two hundred and thirty-five in Pomp City Virtual, so that makes a big statement. Face-to-face instruction, we know, is what works and what parents like. Now, I will tell you, we have some students who are very successful in Pomp City Virtual Okay, questions as far as any of that info? All right, thank you.
Number four, consider to take action on revision to PCC as return to learn plan. It is Superintendent Shelley Eric, we would discuss updates in the return to plan, which was initially included on July nineteen twenty-one.
Roll call, Mrs. Zimrashi.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Number five, consider to take action on American Relief Plan. Let Ms. Eric and Union discuss the district's American Relief Plan, AARP, to go and take action in the Arches. To, whatever, sometimes approve the, approve the American Relief Plan.
Roll call, Mrs. Zimrashi.
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt. Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Number, we consider agenda motion for approval for the consent, consent agenda as per the order, or members have a pack or may call separate vote on all items listed on the consent agenda. We have agenda with commentary, and it's from July nineteen twenty-twenty-one, regular meeting, contracts, agreements under ten thousand dollars, SIR plus resolution, activity fund policies and procedures manual.
Motion approved.
Roll call, Mrs. Truitt, Mr. Newsom, Mrs. Zimrashi.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland.
Aye.
Okay, seven action items. Consider to take action on bond issue with financial reports. We have budget agreements for year twenty-one, twenty-three, and twenty-twenty-two. We have bond reports for fiscal year twenty-one. We have bond firm reports for year fiscal year twenty-two. Bruce Club fund reserves, request, activity fund, fund revenue, essential reports and budgets, treasury report, and application approval.
Pretty good, mean, problems quiet.
He's quiet until a second. Roll call, Mrs. Truitt, Mrs. Rowland.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimrashi.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Just because we talked a lot about the bond issues instead, the war happened in the morning.
Number two, board to take action on employment, and age, and all of the associate, as by the binding to consultants to the district. Mr. Donald and Associates has served the district as a financial advisor for several years. This agreement is in connection with any issuance of general obligation bonds on the district, the district free to pay on the scheduled base on fair value of the bonds. Any questions on that?
No, I'm going to move to approve.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimrashi.
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Number eight, board to consider to take action on resolution authorizing, calling, calling and holding a special election to be held in this school district, authorize issuance of general obligation bonds. And this is for the special election to be held on October twelfth, twenty-one. It is for construction equipment, repairing, remodeling school buildings, acquiring school furniture, pictures, equipment, and acquiring for the school sites.
Before I make a motion to approve number three, I'd like to thank Dawn and Newsom because people don't realize the phone calls we have made, the time we have spent, we have done a whole lot between SIR two and three and the bond issue to get to where we are right now. So Dawn has been a real attribute to make this thing happen. So with that, I would move to approve number three.
I'll say.
You'll second that? Great job. Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimrashi.
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Number four, motion and vote to debate an executive session for the following purpose: to discuss the possible termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment personnel on the attached detailed report, to discuss negotiations, to discuss purchase or appraisal of rural property, and to discuss conference, conversation to the board attorney concerning opinion, plan, and litigations.
I move. Motion to adjourn.
Dawn, make the motion second. Mrs. Truitt. Mrs. Rowland.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimrashi.
First open session. Recital by board president. That minutes of executive session were kept by the board minutes clerk and remain confidential. Consider to take action on recommendations for termination, reassignment, and reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel for the attached detailed report.
No, she for.
She did her teacher thing where she looks over.
Okay.
And Dawn, would someone second that, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimrashi.
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland.
Aye.
We do not have any business.
Motion is adjourned. Second.
Everybody say aye.